Excellent, so we will get started if everybody can mute themselves unless you are speaking. Good afternoon, thank you for joining us for City Council Resolution 21-0007-R Water Billing System, and this is sponsored by Councilman Conway. Today's hearing is exclusively to discuss water billing issues. There is no shortage of water billing issues to discuss, so if anybody goes off-topic, I will politely remind you of today's focus. I want to start off by thanking Director Garbark and Ms. Anita Taylor and their teams for their extensive work on this matter. This issue predates their leadership, and I commend them for taking on what is by far the most thankless job in Baltimore city government. So on behalf of this committee and City Council, we thank you for your work. I'd like to recognize the members of the committee who are with us today, members of the council. We have Councilman Bullock, Councilman Conway, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilmember Burnett, and Councilman Cohen. We also have Richard, staff to the committee. We have Director Garbark from DPW. We have Director Raymond from Finance. We have Inspector General Cummings. We have, who else is here? We have Marcia Collins from DPW. We have Matt Stegman from the President's Office, Nikki Thompson from the President's Office, Nina Themelis from the Mayor's Office. So thank you all for joining us. Before we get started, I will turn it over to the bill sponsor for a few words, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, thank you Chair Schleifer. And I want to thank my co-sponsors on the resolution for this hearing. So for years, Baltimore's residents have struggled to navigate our city's water billing system. Bills have been incorrect, meters don't function as promised, customer service can sometimes be hard to reach. The December joint report from the City and County Inspector General found severe deficiencies that deserve this council's continued attention. $133 million spent on overhauls and fixes, unfortunately with mixed results. Thousands of broken meters and thousands of customer service issues unaddressed. Barely a day goes by where my office, and I'm sure others, don't hear from a constituent struggling with a water billing issue. Some of these issues have taken months and even years to resolve. Some of these constituents are desperate. They've emailed, called, sent letters to DPW, but haven't quite gotten the answers that they need. We have seniors on fixed income struggling to reverse erroneous bills for tens or hundreds or even thousands of dollars. Unfortunately, while we have others like the Ritz Carlton, who've been identified already as not paying bills for over a decade. I have no doubt, knowing Acting Director Garbark, that, you know, in the administration, that they believe, and we believe as well, that these problems need to be fixed and fixed as soon as possible. I have trust in his guidance and his work thus far. And I'm sure that the incoming director-designate Mitchell will put this issue, reforming the water billing system and the governance of this department on a high on his to-do list when he arrives later this spring. Today's hearing is both a continuation of the last council's work at the start of this council, and the start of this council's work to tackle these issues. Whether it's additional hearings that we need to do, or continued communication and documentation with the agencies, or even legislation, the people should know that we will follow through in our commitment to resolve all of these issues. So I'm going to thank, once again, the committee for hearing this and giving it its due diligence. I want to thank the Department, DPW, for working with us to resolve these issues. We look forward to working with you. And I'm looking forward to hopefully getting a pretty good update so that we can move forward on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to also recognize that Councilman Costello has joined us. I will now turn it over to the Inspector General for some remarks. I want to thank her for her leadership in driving the investigation. And we look forward to the findings of that investigation and working together towards the solutions. But I want to turn it over to the Inspector General. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Schlefter, and thank you, Councilwoman Conway. I think this, thank you very much for inviting me to this meeting. This is an incredibly important thing to both the citizens of both Baltimore County and Baltimore City. It was December 8th of 2020 that both myself and my colleague Kelly Madigan, who's the Inspector General of Baltimore County, brought forth the findings of our nine-month investigation on the water billing system. And like Councilwoman Conway said, one of the things that was a bit shocking in our report was that over $133 million had been spent in different studies trying to enhance the water system to make it more effective and efficient for the citizens. And it's still, we were losing millions of dollars. We discovered at the time that there were about 8,000 open tickets or complaints that Baltimore County had reported to Baltimore City that we had not addressed. And at that time, we believed there were about 22,000 meters in the city and the county that were broken. And that's out of 407,000 meters, just to keep everything in perspective. What the OIG did was we recommended that the city and the county work together to try to develop a more coordinated and communicative approach to what happened in the jurisdiction going forward. And it has to be noted that Baltimore County and Baltimore City had actually started when the investigation started nine months earlier. They had just started the process of doing that, and the communication had started to make an impact, and I think that's important, between Stacy Rogers, who is the Baltimore County Administrative Officer, and Matt Garbach, who is our DPW head at the time. They had started a process which we are still continuing, and I've looked into to make sure that is happening. They've also added, of course, our new city administrator, Chris Shorter, to this to make, it's at the highest level, I can assure everybody of that. And since that time, since our report actually came out, they have continued to have the meetings. They have also created multi-level work groups and task force. In fact, Steve Strickland is actually organizing a task force to really address the specific problems of the meter shop, which were great at the time and are, I can say, are moving forward in a positive manner, which I'm happy to report. They've actually brought in, brought, taken some very good managers from other and brought them to the meter shop to really focus, as well as bringing back somebody who had already left Baltimore, who has the institutional knowledge that you need in this type of situation, and they brought her back. And so the focus at the meter shop has intensified tremendously, and that was going to be yielding, I believe, positive results. They have actually, the number of meters we believe now that are broken are now between eight and 12. So that's a tremendous drop from what we had before, which was around 22. They are continuing, remember, oh, well, in my report, we mentioned that there were many broken shop vehicles, and all of that has been returned, and so that has now been fixed as well. So that's a tremendous, because we didn't have vehicles for people to go out and fix. So that's been handled, as well as the handheld meters. Those have been, tremendous effort has been put into fixing that, and that has made a difference too. At the time, Baltimore County, because of the pandemic, Baltimore County hired Itron to actually do the meters in Baltimore because of the pandemic in Baltimore County, which had previously been done by our meter shop. But because of different things, our meter shop went through a tremendous transition, and it's all starting to finally come back. And I've been told, and I will check, by May, by the beginning of May, we should have everything operational. Itron will be more or less no longer needed because Baltimore City will be able to take it back and start mining our own. Also, I have been told, and I'm happy to report, that there was a group called NewGen that did a comprehensive report. We're talking a 400-page report, the very intensive executive summary that will be able to be presented to you in the future, and me. Right now, it's with the mayor and the county executive when they're able to have this presented to them, and that will also show some of the things that we all have to strive to make this better. But I am able to report that things are actually moving forward since the report, and a lot of change has actually started. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Inspector General Cummings. I want to recognize Council Vice President Middleton has joined us, and Councilwoman Torrance has joined us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before we get into DPW, I want to see if any of the other agencies have anything they'd like to add. I'll start with Hillary Rulie from the Law Department.
Obviously, it's a resolution, so we would approve the resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you. Director Raymond, do you have something you'd like to add?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Members of the Council. The Department of, I just want to make a brief comment about the Department of Finance's role in the water billing process. So essentially, we have three functions. First, we process all of the payments received related to water payments. Second, we address constituent concerns related to those payments. For example, did I overpay? Did I underpay? Did you receive my payment? Constituent issues of that nature. And finally, the Finance Department issues water refunds that have been authorized by the Department of Public Works. So those are the three primary areas of the Finance Department's involvement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See, no other agencies. I will turn it over to you, Director Garbark, and for any remarks or presentation that you guys have, and whoever else on your team you'd like to present.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, I'm Matt Garbark, I'm the Acting Director for the Baltimore City Department of Public Works. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this extraordinarily important issue. As you've heard me say, and the mayor say, the billing is basically how we function and how we protect and preserve our utility. So making sure that that is working effectively and efficiently is critical, and of that, the meters are the cash registers, the equivalent of cash registers. So making sure that that is the first and foremost place that we work on addressing issues is really the key. I know you have many questions, and I'll be brief, just sort of painting a more broad picture of where we are and how we came here. So in 2016, so getting on five years now, October of 2016, the City Department of Public Works made three revolutionary changes to the water billing process, any one of which would have been significant and challenging. First, we replaced all, as Inspector General Cummings said, all 407,000 meters in the system, from older mechanical meters to electronic digital meters that remotely and wirelessly send signals about consumption usage. Second, we changed billing system from an outdated and older system to a much modern, newer, more robust, more effective and transparent system. Major overhaul of that billing system. And third, we changed our rate structure. We changed the way water is billed. There were additional fees that were added, and most significantly, we changed from a quarterly billing system to a monthly billing system. So the changes themselves were very forward-thinking. It's basically, these types of changes are sort of the future of utilities, going from more mechanical analog meters that require a large amount of people to walk, pop meter vaults, write down the numbers, to ones that are more electronic and intuitive. However, with such significant change comes the potential for major challenges and major issues, and we have obviously seen those. I do want to note that the vast majority of accounts in the city and the county have no issues. They are built correctly, there are no issues with the accounts. There are probably 5% give or take of accounts that do have issues, and that have, some of which, a small percentage of that, have had significant issues and ongoing issues. And those are the ones that are really the troubling areas and the ones that occupy a tremendous amount of our time, and I'm sure your time as well. To that extent, we take these issues extremely seriously. We are committed to resolving them. We thank the inspectors general, both from the city and the county, for the work they did. And it's truly been very useful to be able to take that report and look at some of the very specific items and almost use it as like a punch list, so that we can start fixing things and start prioritizing things. And as I mentioned, the first place we needed to start was the cash register, was the meters themselves. Because if it's not reading correctly, if they're not responding to issues correctly, then everything else from that point down is going to be an error. So we are in the midst of doing a soup to nuts, top to bottom, left to right review of the meter shop. We are not looking to do, make it punitive on anyone. We are looking to make it collaborative. We want to learn from those who can offer information, and we want to have everyone part of this change. So we've made abundantly clear to all the staff that that's what we're going to do, and we're going to let them take responsibility for their work and take as much as they can and as much as they would like on. And one of the pieces of that is using, leveraging the existing Itron contract that Inspector General Cummings mentioned, to help train these folks, or retrain these folks, so that we have as much hands-on field experience and training as we can get. So this is the first time the meter shop has gotten this level of attention, and quite frankly, this is the first time that the department and the city has taken this type of approach to almost isolate and intensely focus on one specific area to try to affect some meaningful change, and we're really excited about that. We've gotten some of the background, some of the backdoor stuff taken care of. Every vehicle has been maintained and been up and running. We're getting, making sure that we're getting portable reeds in-house. We are making sure that our supply rooms are all up to stuff and all of that. So those are some of the things we're already doing. We're also working with the county extremely closely. We formed a very strong relationship with Baltimore County. And I'm sure many of you are aware that there, in the history of this water system, there has not always been a very friendly relationship with Baltimore County. I can truly say that with Administrator Rogers and County Executive Oshewski, that has changed completely. It's a very collaborative relationship, it is a very proactive relationship. We have regular meetings, and we are making a tremendous, tremendous progress on resolving some of historic issues that have been plaguing the system from both jurisdictions, as well as looking to make some significant changes and make these changes. And again, the inspectors general report does really help provide that punch list and that sort of task list, so to speak, that we can then use with some of the other studies and this other review that will be forthcoming to change this and to move it. And again, I want to say that billing, the water meters, those things are a piece of the broader puzzle. We know that this is a major area, but we're not just going to stop there. We need to look at the system. We need to make sure that this is a system that was built in the 19th century, that it is now modernized and brought up to the 21st century. So I'll keep it there, and I'm happy to respond to any questions that you would like or provide any more clarification, and I'm joined with members of my team who can help with that as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Garbark. And I see we are joined by Stacy Rogers. Thank you for joining us. And being that we are regional, and you are a stakeholder in this, I'll give you the opportunity to say a few words if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to again reiterate our full partnership in this endeavor. When you look at the longstanding relationship that dates back to the 1900s in terms of the water system, Baltimore County, Baltimore City have a unique relationship. As a part of the end-to-end study, we've been advised that we're the most unique systems in the country. But I want to again reiterate what Director Garbark indicated. We have a full partnership. We've been working together collaboratively since July of 2019. Shortly after I arrived here in the county, I arrived on April 1st, was briefed on several matters in terms of our working relationship. As you know, I arrived from the county, coming from the city, as the former director of Baltimore City DSS. So I understand that regional partnership. So we are fully engaged, fully committed to making it the premier water sewer system utility in the region, if not in the country. But it takes the collaboration, and it takes the hard work of rolling up our sleeves and doing the work the public administrators do. We're about to brief, as Inspector Cummings indicated, we're about to brief the mayor and county executive on the findings of our end-to-end study, and we look forward to working closely with our inspector general and Inspector General Cummings in walking through the mitigation as well as the implementation plans that we're going to jointly administer as a result of the study. So we look forward to continuing the collaboration that we've had over the last almost two years.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your partnership. That actually gets into, it's a good segue to my first question that I have for you, Director Garbark, regarding something that I hear no less than three times a day, which is about what are billing differences between the city versus the county, whether you live on one side of the line versus the other? So would you mind just addressing that as far as cost is concerned, as well as how billing is handled in both the city versus the county?
Certainly. So Baltimore City bills city residents monthly for water, sewer, and for storm water. Baltimore County residents are billed monthly, or are billed quarterly only for water. So there is not a sewer charge, and there's not a stormwater charge. And it's only the water charge. The sewer and other charges are issued once a year when the property tax bills are issued. So that's the most significant impact, is that the water charges versus water, sewer, and stormwater are, really account for that major change. And if you do look at your bill, the water charges themselves are not really the bulk of the bill. Bulk of the bill is sewer treatment and the wastewater treatment. That requires a lot of effort and a lot of funding for that. The other piece of it is that the county authorizes us to bill their residents. So they set their rates, they send it to the city, the city takes it to the Board of Estimates, and then we bill county residents. In the 1972 agreement, which essentially memorializes all of the various laws and actions and other things that went up prior to that, it says that we, the city, looks at and develops collaboratively with the county, the operating and maintenance costs of the system. We then allocate it, using an allocation model, the cost allocation model, the shares between the city and the county. You look at that model, if that amount of money, that allocated cost, is higher than what was collected by residents for their water bills, then the county owes that extra amount of money. If the allocated cost is lower than what was collected, then the county gets a credit, and we send that back to them. So that is how the system is paid for, and it's basically up to both jurisdictions as to how they want to cover those costs and the mechanisms to cover them. And the city has opted to use monthly bills and to have everything on that one bill, and the county has done it a different way.
So is it accurate to say that a unit of water consumed or utilized in the city would be the same cost as a unit of water in the county? There's just a different method of how it's being paid?
Absolutely, absolutely. And there's a different method of how it's paid and a different method of how the revenue is collected. But the cost for a one particular unit of water consumed anywhere in the system, that includes even wholesale for Baltimore County, or Howard County, the base cost for a unit of water is the same throughout the entire system.
Actually, thank you for that. My second question is regarding just volume of billing disputes. On average, how many billing disputes is your team working on at a given time?
Is Ms. Taylor on the line? Anita? Do you have a general ballpark figure on that?
Yes, could you repeat the question?
So my question is regarding, how many open disputes are there at any given time? Like a ballpark figure?
It's a, we have around 2,000 open billing dispute.
And how many agents do you have that are working on that at a given time?
We have nine agents that is dedicated to the billing dispute. And the billing dispute also incorporates the email disputes as well. So we have a total of nine dedicated employees, and we have four dedicated supervisors slash managers, including myself, that's working on them.
Well, all right, so that, we can note that down as the first major issue. It's just that that level of volume being dealt with by a single person just obviously does not lead to a resolution, because it's unreasonable to expect these customer service or representatives to handle over 200 cases at any given time. So certainly, that is something that we have to discuss as we go into the new budget season. But do you guys have a set number of people that would actually, based on other best practices nationwide, of how many people you would need to handle that kind of volume of claims and issues?
So the number that I gave you is the backlog, and the backlog is dating back a couple of years. The oldest date is 2019. Now, what-
About how many representative would you need? What's the ideal number? Obviously, nine is way too, way too small. So how many representatives do you need?
Okay, nine would be ideal for if we were current, but to get caught up, my guesstimate is we would need about 20 temporarily, but once we're caught up, then we would be overstaffed for that amount of representatives. So what we need to do is just, and come up with a strategic plan on how to get caught up with temporary help, but we would not be able to keep all of the help that I would be requesting to get caught up, because once we're caught up, then we would be overstaffed.
Actually, that sounds reasonable. Thank you so much for that. I will now turn it over to the bill sponsor to ask a couple of questions, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I'm very glad to hear, Director Garbark, that you guys are using the IG's report as a sort of a punch list and working your way down. The report, I want to thank you, IG and Cummings, is very thorough and very helpful in sort of helping us to wrap our hands around the problem. So my first question is geared towards an issue that I'm seeing actually quite a bit in my district. So, you know, we have one instance where the Women's Housing Coalition- So, you know, we have one instance where the Women's Housing Coalition is a 14-unit residential facility. It's showing a daily usage of seven times their normal average through 2018 and 2019. And they were overcharged as a result, almost $10,000, and received a notice that the property will be included in the upcoming tax sale. Another property on Tonbridge Road received bills from January to August of 2019 that totaled $99,000 for a two-bedroom rohome. You know, we had an inspector come out and check the, check the property and check for leaks, and they didn't find any leaks on two separate occasions. And there hasn't unfortunately been a resolution to this. These are very particular issues, but I think it lends itself to the bigger issue around the unknown problems that we have yet to address. So the question is very specific, but speaks to a broader perspective. How many of the smart meters identified in the report are still not functional? And then do we have a sense for why that is and what our timeline is to get there?
So, um, yeah, yeah. So it, basically, so here's how it works and I, we have for Baltimore City, we have 15 different cycles every month. So they're batches, 15 batches. And every couple of days is another batch, and that's usually 10,000 to 15,000 counts. What that does is the system collects those reads. And if something is not functioning, is not sending a read, then that particular count is flagged. If something is so high or so low compared to the previous month, that is also flagged. Neither of those things obviously can generate a bill. They need to go be investigated. So ideally, all of that is done within 48 hours. So that you can resolve any issues, get it back into the system and have the bill generated. In reality, the system, it doesn't, it's usually, it doesn't happen that quickly. So sometimes that's why people don't get billed for a month or two. The way we go about inspecting something is we first look at the meter and the connections. And we make sure that all the connections are appropriate. We then look at, it's a electronic read transmitter, the ERT. It's the device that actually is with epoxy affixed to the underside of the meter lid, which actually transmits the data to our receivers. We make sure that the electronic components are working properly. If there's any question on anything, or if the customer still says, no, I don't, something's wrong with this meter, we will take the meter out. We'll then put in a space pipe, so it's just waters flowing continuously. We will then take it back to the meter shop where we do a bench test, where we can actually use machinery to check the flow and the calibration of the meter. So that is showing us whether the meter is accurate or not accurate. So once we do all of those things, the issue then becomes a little more complicated because on our end, we have looked to see where the errors or issues could be in the system. And nothing is showing specifically in the system. That is what the city is responsible for. And that's where it becomes very difficult, and it can sometimes be a needle in a haystack, to find what the issue is. Sometimes leaks can be miniscule, not even recognized. Other times there are underground leaks, other times there are theft of water, neighbors stealing certain water. And that's what we try to get to. But that's, that's the way we resolve the process because we try to find and look for any possible reason that something is an error or something is justifying why that amount of water was used. So as we go through that process, we are looking constantly, every month, we are out there checking meters. So there, so to answer your question, there should not be a meter out there that's having a problem for more than one month. We are looking every month to go and check those meters. I'm sure there probably are some. And that's one of the reasons why we're overhauling the meter shop. But the process should be that we get out immediately when there's a problem. We look, we check the meter. If there's an error with the meter, we replace it. If there's no error with the meter, then we can continue functioning. So it should not go more than one month where there is an error with the meter. I guess that's a long-winded answer to your question, perhaps.
Sure, yeah, that gives a lot of context. I think to be more pointed, the IG identified 22,000 meters where we had issues, 14,000 were in the city, 8,000 were in the county. Do we know how far we have worked down those 22,000 meters?
Yeah, yes. So these, these are again, what I was talking about is in the perfect world, everything is fixed, everything. We know we're not there. We know that we, things have piled up. So yes, there were 14,800 or 8,000 or so issues that were identified. Those are now down to about 8,000. So we have divided those in half. Also, we are working with the county to
To clarify, 8,000 of the 14 or 8,000 out of 22?
We, we are down to about 8,000 to 10,000, I don't know the exact number, of meters total, system-wide, county and city, that we believe there might be issues with.
Awesome, thank you.
And we're prioritizing a list of about 1,200, which are large meters. And we're working closely with the county to prioritize those. When you get to larger meters, you need, we need to have contractors go in and work on those. Sometimes they can be extremely complicated and require expert knowledge on how to repair and how to replace. So we are going to look at prioritizing those meters because of the impact on revenue.
Excellent. And also in the report, we identified just shy of 12,000 open tickets from the county. Many of those were open for over a year and many more, or maybe not many more, but of the ones that were open over a year, a lot of them were for open, open for more than three years. Have we made any progress on that? How many, how many have we come down on those issues as well?
Yes, yes. Thank, thank you for that. I believe, I don't recall the exact number. Ms. Taylor can help me, but I believe it was somewhere in the 6,000 range is what's remaining. The thing we're finding with a lot of these tickets, and I just want to say this, is that as we've gone through our billing cycles and have noticed a problem, we've addressed it. So we're finding a lot of the issues that were noted have ended up being addressed through the normal billing cycle. So we're luckily being able to close some of those issues out and resolve some of those issues quite timely and quite quickly. But we are going through that, that number and take those very seriously to make sure that we're getting to all those.
Yes, we are down to 6,000, the highest numbers that are reported. That's correct.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues and the bill sponsor for bringing this issue up. I had a, just a quick follow-up with Director, Acting Director Garbark. Can you, you mentioned it briefly, but actually, can you walk us through what the partnership or relationship is with Howard County? As it relates to the water system?
Yeah, thank you. No, that's a, that's a great point. So we actually had Baltimore City purchase large pieces of property in the early 1900s. We have three large, what we call them raw water reservoirs, Liberty, Pretty Boy, Lock Raven. That provides enough water for an area of about 1.8 million people. So that water is then drained through, through large pipes at dams down to one of our three filtration plants. We then pump that to our customers in the county and the city. County customers and city customers are metered water, so every house has its own meter. We supply about half of Howard County's water. So what that is, is there is a large transmission main, a very, four large transmission mains, very huge, almost 10 to 12-foot pipes with large meters that we're sending wholesale water. It's filtered water, but it is just the bulk amount of water. The county then meters its water itself, then remits a bill for what we charge them for that wholesale water. So that is Howard County. They have, half of their water comes from Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, half of it comes from Baltimore City. We used to provide water to Anarongo County. We no longer provide water to them. That they are using other technologies to use water from the aquifer, their groundwater. We sell raw water to Carroll County. Carroll County has created its own filtration plant. They draw from a portion of the Liberty Reservoir for themselves to use it. It's a very minimal cost to us and they pay us for that cost. And then we actually have a 35-mile pipe that goes up to the Susquehanna River. So if there are ever an issue of drought or anything, you can draw up to, I think it's 50 million gallons a day from the Susquehanna River. But it could actually be turned back around. And what we're doing now, we are selling raw water from the Lock Raven Reservoir to Harford County for them to use that as well. So this is a pretty significant system and, and as Administrator Rogers noted, it is one of, it is the most unique system in the entire country. So that's how it all relates. So these are our, we call it raw water customer, our wholesale customer, and then our metered water customers. And then by waste services, which is a whole, that's the sewer system. We provide those services to portions of Howard County, Baltimore County, Anarongo County.
Okay. My second question, Mr. Chair, is, and my apologies if I missed it, but is there an update? I remember there was a, a report that private contractors were temporarily used, and then there was to be a shift back to city employees. Can you just provide us a general update on where that stands?
Yep. So the contract, Baltimore County entered into a contract for Itron to provide reads through the end of April, support through the end of April. So that includes the first quarter of 2021 and up to and through the April 31st. We, the city will resume billing, or will resume meter operations for county meters in May. But that's not just going to be a start then. They are working now. They are working with Itron folks to basically make sure that their skills are, are at the height of where they need to be, that they are getting back into the swing of taking the reads and that they are using the equipment that they need to use and using it properly to get those reads. So they're shadowing Itron from now to the end of that, and then in May it'll resume to full city, city operations, taking those, those reads.
And I'll save my third question for the next round, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilor President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I have a comment and then I guess just a question. Mr. Garb, Director Garbo, I know that you have been just tirelessly working on this way back from the last term when we, we had the Water Accountability Act and just so many different things. And I just, first of all, want to say while there still is, you know, complaints that all of us as council members regarding high water bills, I just have to say, by and large, the creation of that escalations department has had a pretty good, you know, it's been a pretty good response. And the only, you know, I think there's like this hang-on of constituents that call us, that call our offices when, on their behalf, when things have really gotten bad. And just experience from my office, I see that it has leveled out somewhat. And because of the question that the chair, one of the questions the chair raised about the number of people that are working on these escalations, I think that is probably one of the reasons why we continue to get this, this hold on of complaints coming in. So I'm hopeful that, and then the person that handles that escalations department, you know, kind of had mentioned that we need, you need extra people, but then it's going to be, you know, a temporary thing until it levels off and then we'll get back to the regular nine or 10 people that you're going to need. So I, but I guess what my question is, I know you quickly mentioned, I've really been starting to get complaints in about people that have just not received a bill. And, you know, I'm talking three to four months and they're like in a panic because, you know, a number of these people want to pay their monthly bill. So what do you, how can we really get a hold and correct that? Because there's people out there still that are not getting any kind of recognition from DPW about a water bill.
No, that, thank you for that question. That's a, that's a very, really good point. And, and, and sort of talking about a backlog or things that are piled up. It was really knocked us back was the ransomware. And I know you hear it all the time. But ransomware got into the server. It riddled the server that all the billing was on for about eight months. Couldn't take anything out of the server, couldn't process any water bills. That then generated these massive bills, if you recall, I'm sure you were, of massive amounts of water that the cost went all the way back to whenever ransomware happened, I guess it was April or May. So that period of time, then you get up to the pandemic, then you get up to everyone going from home, everyone changing from half their day, most of their day being outside of work, to everyone living, using more water, has just raised a myriad of sort of unique and complex issues that have required basically account by account by account reviews to make sure everything is processed. Because honestly, people don't, aren't really necessarily looking at the details of everything, and then they're smacked with a very large bill or didn't realize how much water is being used. So all of these things have had to take a long time to review. You add to that the fact that the billing system and rate structure changed five years ago, the system changed. There have been learning curves for some folks who in the billing office had been used to a different way of doing it, where it was much more paper-oriented, it was much more process-oriented rather than electronic. So that's just sort of background of how we sort of came up on some of this backlog. But to your point, we are working as hard as we can and as fast as we can. And one of the primary indicators, primary indicators for effectiveness of what we're doing is to see if the same account has a problem from one month to another month, or for the county from one quarter to another quarter. That's going to tell us that if the same account isn't being billed, is being kicked out, is whatever, that it's, that we're not making a change. That's going to tell us if we can do that month after month to see if that same bill or that same account has a problem, that shows that we're making some, 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 some improvements there. So that is something that we're working on as quickly as we can. And it's something that is, is going to be a top priority as we work through this process and get everything back on and functioning. So if people haven't received a bill, they, we encourage them to please reach out. But if not, we will obviously look to resolve that and get all bills updated, sent out as soon as we can.
Thank you. And then just, I guess, just one quick question. This is a yes or no. Are constituents, do you still have that program where constituents can get credit for fee, the fee payment if they do community service or something? Wasn't there something, some kind of program? Is that still in existence?
Yes, I believe, oh, yes, I believe you're referring to the stormwater cleanup. Uh, the uh cleanup program that we have, if you uh participate in that community cleanup, you can get a credit on your um stormwater portion of your bill. That is still in place. Yes.
Okay. That needs to be, I guess, re-advertized and marketed, especially since we're getting in the spring and summer months. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just can I uh tag on to that point? Um, this is for folks that are curious on how to register an event. You just call through our own line and tell them that you're doing a stormwater event. Um, and, and they'll register the event and then you can issue certifications to get a reimbursement on your water bill.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Council Vice President for bringing up that program. You know, I'd found out about that program like two weeks after I co-hosted a regional cleanup of a stream that borders the kids, uh, city and county with Councilman Patoka. And we had a hundred and fifty people from both sides of the line and I found out that everybody was eligible for a water bill credit. And so um, certainly that message needs to get out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next, next up is um, just going in order, uh, Councilman Terrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, um IG Coming. And also, um, thank you, Director Garbark. I have very technical questions because in my head, listening to everything being digital, after the ransomware, did we do an audit of just the coding of our system to make sure that we weren't generating billing, bills that were incorrect because of something that happened on that ransomware? Because I've known where other, when, when other municipalities had those issues, the persons who had the ransomware were stealing funds that way by creating incorrect bills and then somehow stayed inside their internal system. I just want to make sure that we did our due diligence to make sure that we addressed and potentially that there might potentially still be some risk and that they may be exposing some issue in our water billing. Just wanted to put my first question out there.
No, no, I, I appreciate that question. Um, uh, yes, I, I am, I am sure that we have um secured the system. We um worked tirelessly with BSIT as well as uh with vendors and contractors and consultants, and we rebuilt piece by piece, code by code, the entire server. Then we put that online for about two months and constantly ran bills. And we did a full couple of cycles um to make sure that the bills were proper, that everything was working um appropriately. And in addition to that, we made sure that it was completely secure within the city's firewall and that it complied with all of new BSIT um uh security uh parameters so that people couldn't access it and that there was no way to gain um access to that. So um, I, I'm, I am certain that we made sure that that is a secure system. And uh that it, from that end at least, um, it, there's, there's, there's no issue or at least if there were to be an issue, we'd be able to detect it very quickly.
Mr. Chair, I know I have a litany of questions. Can I do a follow-up and then a subsequent question?
Sure, we'll give you two and a half this round.
All right, two and a half. Thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask you before I did it. Um, so we do that, but do we annually look at the coding in our system too? Because often things may run for some time after the, in the testing environment has ran for some time. And then randomly glitches happen or a patch has, uh, we haven't done patch work yet. So how do we, or do we annually do that as well?
Yes. So um, we have contracted, the system is, is, is owned, the UMAX billing system is owned by um Itinerous. And they uh host it and run it and administer it for us. They administer patches. They administer all sorts of updates and they monitor it um several times throughout the month. Um, they are also looking at, I believe there is an update that, that is um on the horizon for this system. So it is something that is constantly uh reviewed and, and updated.
And then my next question goes back to staffing and capacity. Um, I heard your representative announce that you needed at least nine persons fully staffed for just if we're current and then additional, I believe, nine or ten persons to get caught up. My other question is, have we explored automa- automation that allows us to flag accounts? Where if we did hire those additional ten people, they can examine those accounts in a proactive way to make sure that we're preventing any type of actual errors occurring in the system and catching things forward?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, the, 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 the way, the way it's, it's supposed to work, the way a system's supposed to work is if there are tolerances, there are variances, that if the bill is either really, really high or really, really low as compared to the previous three months or two months or something, I, I can't remember the exact period, it flags it and kicks it out for, for manual uh review. So that, that is something that is built in the system um that sort of proactively catches that. The, the one thing that has been very positive, there's not a lot of positive things to come out of the, of the pandemic, but one thing that this has forced us to do is our um customer service representatives and billing representatives now have the full capability to manage the system remotely. So they can be anywhere and do not have to be physically in the building to do that. So we've been able to make it fully remote so that um it can, it can um be processed and, and worked on uh wherever, so long as someone has an internet connection.
Perfect. Thank you, Director, and I reserve my time. Back to the chair.
Thank you. And next up, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, Director Garbark, I first want to just say that um I think that all of the DPW team has just done amazing during the pandemic. You, you and your staff and the, and all of the um workers uh have really run the city during this time. And I um really appreciate that. And I, I do hope all the workday issues are being worked out. Um, I think we've, we've seen a decrease in those, in those emails, so I appreciate that. Um, Ma, I have a few questions, but I'll, um, what, what is the status of the implementation of the Affordability and Accountability Act? I know that you're deep in trying to address the work that the um OIG had um, had pointed out. Um, but I do think that it's important to just get a status update about that.
Sure. Um, obviously, um Mayor Scott has um been fully committed to this, to this legislation. Um, and we are proceeding um to, to have the, the law in place and um effective uh by the time uh the required, so by July one. So that is something we are um building in our projections, we are building in our budget um to make sure that it can be um, that we have the affordability for this program and we are making sure that it is a priority as we develop the budget so that we can get it uh rolling by July one.
Thank you. And um, totally separate issue, uh, you mentioned that you are trying to work through the issues around um properties not getting a water bill. I have a couple of condo buildings in my district that haven't gotten water bills in a couple of years and we've been trying to work through that. Um, uh, but separately, there's still this issue of when um someone buys a home, often the water bill is still not transferred from the old, from, it's not, the, the payment is not made properly or the, the transfer of who gets that water bill is not done properly. And so it becomes a real hassle after settlement for trying to figure out who owes what water bill. Um, is that something that's going to be part of this analysis that's being done um in the context of the OIG report as well?
Yeah, yeah, that, this, this whole thing, it won't be sort of the main, it, it's obviously part of the, the overall review to make sure that the system is, is running properly. Um, it's not critically part of, you know, the IG's review that they noted. But that brings up an issue of um how we coordinate with other systems in the city that the Finance Department or Housing or other places um operate. We have our billing system. The billing system ultimately is, is connected to the city, to the ledger, to the general ledger of the city. So bill payments come to the Director of Finance, but are then remitted and put into the, the enterprise funds. And when we have all these different systems that aren't necessarily talking to each other or you need to have manual review of certain things, that's where the, these, these gaps end up, end up opening. And there's a bill that hasn't been paid or something that hasn't been included on the lien sheet or something like that. That's what, that is something we do need to, to address. And I think um, we can look to address that with the, the UMAX system is only you being used for a, 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 a small portion of its capabilities. So there's potential there to use that stuff. And honestly, there's also um some just personnel and administrative things we can tighten up in terms of SOPs, policies and, and trainings, just to make sure things are sort of done a certain way so that um, so that we can move things forward.
Mr. Chair, can I just follow up on that point?
Sure.
Uh, thank you. Um, so I think the issue isn't necessarily on the lien sheet side. I think it's on the other side. Once the property transfers, then people are still getting the water bill in somebody else's name or the water, yeah, or the water bill is going to uh the, the old owner with the new owner's um uh consumption and there's all kinds of mix-up, especially if that person still lives in the city, um, once they, once they move. So it's, it's the after the transfer piece that is the confusion.
And, and that, that sort of, the reverse of what I just sort of said is, is sort of the case that when that property is transferred, we're not always notified. So when someone comes and says, hey, property one, two, three, whatever, put it in my name, we, we need to then get some sort of official documentation to make sure that they actually own that property. So that ends up taking some time, but I think the same thing applies to uh tightening up some procedures and all, and then looking to see if, if some of the sys- systems and the technology um can be used to be a little more automated to that extent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, next up, Councilman Cohn.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Madam Inspector General, uh Director Garbark, um, to all my colleagues, to the bill sponsor. Um, and first off, I do want to really thank you, Director Garbark, um, you know, for your leadership and service. Especially want to thank you for working with Chairman Schleifer and I on getting raises for the sanitation workers. We knew that having part-time, underpaid workers was horrendous and that our women and men at DPW deserve better. Um, but I do want to talk about the amount of time and energy that I as a councilman and my colleagues spend dealing with erroneous water bills. Um, the report lays it out really well. Uh, Ms. Taylor had said over two thousand backlog, which is an incredible number. Um, for me, over the four years plus a quarter that I've been in office, we've had three hundred and ninety-seven water billing requests. Um, that is an extraordinary amount of time that my office has dedicated to advocating for constituents. That's fourteen percent of our total requests that we receive. And if I extrapolate that out across fourteen districts, um, that is just a monstrous amount of energy that the legislative branch of the city government is putting into correcting what is really an administrative function. So I'm curious, within the agency, um, have there been any conversation about having some form of consumer advocate? So that it doesn't fall to us to, each time we get a complaint, we have the person use the escalation system, but then we end up jumping in back and forth um with DPW staff. Like, has there been conversation and will there, I, I know um, you know, after you are no longer director, but has there been conversation about having a, some form of consumer advocate or someone who is really fighting for customers so that that work doesn't just fall to city council people?
Yes. Um, the Water Affordability Act actually does provide for the creation of a customer advocacy and support office. Those positions have been completely funded. We have um advertised them. We are going to probably re-advertise them so the new director and the administration can help uh shape those, but that is absolutely something that we are pursuing. We have the positions for and we have the budget for. So yes, that will be forthcoming.
Once that is fully locked and loaded, is your anticipation that that service will redirect all, or the bulk of the concerns and complaints that we get? I mean, ultimately, I think the bottom line is we have to fix the system itself so that neither those people nor us nor anyone are constantly scrambling on behalf of constituents. But in the interim, is it your expectation that that will divert a substantial amount of the constituent requests away? And what's the system that DPW is developing internally so that folks know how to leverage that instead of, again, just calling our offices again, again, and again?
Yeah, no, so, so those are, those are all um excellent questions. It's um, I, I want to say yes, it would fix that, but I, I'm not entirely sure. We, we find a lot of customers um don't necessarily understand the bill or, or the rate increases or structures. And a lot of issues can be resolved by walking them through the bill and what's going on. A lot of people may not be happy that we're, rates were increased, but they understand it. So I think to that end, that will take a lot of that pressure off to have someone who, when they answer the call, this is someone to say, okay, let's go through your issue. Let me explain this, let me explain that. So that there's not a follow-up or an escalation or other things that, that your offices are going to need to, need to see. And how we're going to advertise that is, one of the, the really effective methods that we have is, is obviously water bills. Uh, we are going to put, make sure that that's included in water bills and, and, and uh pieces of paper and, and other things where people can see that. We're going to include it on the bill itself. And we're going to make sure that um it's on our website, it's, it's uh available on our um social media sites, and then we're going to have all of our liaisons make sure that that information is uh produced and, and distributed to community associations um and other large organizations um as they move out and about. We want to make this um something that is going to be effective and work well because um we, we're, we're really interested to make it um improve and make it, make it work.
Great. Um, thank you so much. Um, and my last question is, have you all figured out, are, are we going to be doing um billing that is online and automatic at some point?
Yes, yes. Ideally, yes. That is getting back to sort of the systems talking to each other question. The, the automatic payment piece is the, the general ledger, the, that's, that's a different piece than the billing system. How that talks to each other is, is, is how we need to look into resolving that. The issue of automatic credits, automatic deductions, we need to think through to make sure that the bills are not unfortunately generating a very large number because we don't want someone's entire account to be drawn, you know, out or something. So that is the intention, that is, those are the features we paid for on UMAX that we would love to make functional. Um, it's just a lot of, of details and some other systems pieces and some other sort of quality assurance, quality control pieces that we need to work out. But that's the ultimate goal.
Yeah, I know as we automate and begin modernizing our city in so many different ways, that comes up a lot for my constituents. So I think that's an important movement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I can, I can say that that definitely uh is something that's in the works. Uh, Director Chow told me it'll happen within six months, and so that was going back four years ago. So certainly once we have that budget built, that, once we have that automatic billing, it will certainly help. Um, I'll turn it over now, last uh but not least, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just, I want to go back to the previous line of, of questions for a moment, because um, give me one second, please. I, I just want to make sure I, I fully understand that because I, I don't think that I do. Um, Acting Director Garbark, can you, can you walk me through what's, where we're at now? Because right now, um, we don't do automatic billing, right? Um, walk, walk me through how we get from where we're at right now to how we get to automatic. to how we get to automatic billing. So I can, because I don't, I don't really understand.
Sure. So um, couple of, a couple of things. There's some process things and then there's other, other, you know, in the charter, for instance, for most things, charter says that everything anything paid to or from the city is sent to the Director of Finance. That's what the charter requires. So the finance department um, system is what is the input for everything. So we would need to either use this system separately, which would not necessarily be in line with the charter, or somehow have this system connect with the payments system that's currently in place. They're two different systems. They're proprietary. There, we pay vendors to support them. Um, so they're not necessarily that interested in making the two work together. Doesn't mean they can't work together, but the city's, the payment portal also pays everything else in the city. The UMAX system is only dedicated to the water bills. So having that data come over would require a pretty significant migration and making sure that that all works together. Um, that's not to say it can't happen. That's just where we are. There would need to be some administrative procedures put in there to allow the system to build, accept payments, and then making sure that it can comport and get into the general ledger uh, in a way that's, that's automatic and not really, you know, hand done or, or individually done. Did that confuse the situation even more? Did that make sense?
I'll tell you, it didn't further confuse me. I, I don't know that it clarified, and I do appreciate your effort. I think, Director Raymond, do you, do you have anything?
Yes, good afternoon. Uh, to echo on, but uh, Director Garbark has indicated, the issue is that an interface would have to be built to transfer the in, the payment information from the water billing system into the general ledger so that uh, the cash properly recorded. Uh, with the implementation of Workday, we will be looking at improving the payment systems as part of probably Phase Three of Workday implementation. Phase Two and Phase Three are the financial components of the Workday implementation. Uh, general ledger, et cetera. So uh, that will be reviewed. But it would require an interface. So, but, but because the water system can't deposit the cash in the bank account.
Currently.
You know, that, that comes from the general ledger. So as Director Garbark indicated, the charter requirement that all payments go to the Director of Finance, it's because the, the Director of Finance has the overall responsibility of the management and administration of the city's financial system. Which is getting the cash into the correct accounts and getting the cash into the bank accounts.
So I, I appreciate the IT complications with making this happen. And while I don't know that I've been satisfied with the answer in the past, that it's not possible. Because this is a new answer that we're receiving today, right? And this is an issue that I've brought to you guys on a number of occasions over the years. I've kind of resigned myself to the fact that we're simply not going to be able to do this. What I'm hearing today is that there's actually a pathway to do this and there's an interest to do this. Is that correct?
I'd say yes. Uh, this is an effort to improve customer service to all the constituents. And it's not just limited to automated payments for the water billing system. We want to explore this for paying parking tickets, paying other types of citations where constituents can use their, their mobile device to make the payment.
Okay, no, no, I, I, I appreciate that. And I'm not just being realistic with you. I've resigned myself to the fact that this is probably never going to happen. And now I'm hearing that my whole world is shifting and this, this change could actually happen. So I'm very excited about it and I'm not sure how to react to all that. So I, I think what I'm, so now that you've explained all this to me.
Look, look, for one second, just
Please.
To share with you what the change is, is the advent of new technology. And you have asked the question previously in prior years. Our viewpoint would legacy systems. We are in the process of moving to a state-of-the-art, cloud-based system with much more functionality than what we had in the past. So these are the types of things that we're looking at as we move forward with the implementation of Workday.
So, so what I would, what I would say is respectfully, I think what you mean to say is with the procurement of new technology, not the advent of, because this technology to do kind of the automatic payments has been around for some time. So, so I guess my final question, Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me, because I've, I think I'm the last person in line here, correct?
Yep.
I just want to make sure I'm being respectful of, of your chairmanship and rules, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, I guess can we set some, some, can, can you help set some reasonable expectations for us as to what we're looking at here? Like, is this something that, you know, where does this fall on the list of priorities? You, you already mentioned that this is in, I think this is like after Phase Two at the beginning of Phase Three and Workday implementation. Where are we at in that? I, I don't need you to go into a whole bunch of detail, but like, just when is this going to happen? Because in my mind, I don't see this happening anytime in the near future. Hopefully, I'm wrong, but I defer to you.
Uh, we will be ending Phase Two in the next several months. Phase Two is going to last between nine to 12 months for implementation. Now, keep in mind, Phase Two includes many things besides the general ledger. It's the new procurement system, budget system, uh, business assets, inventory, receivables, payables, et cetera. Um, Phase Three is going to include other items such as uh, billing and collections. So I would say 18 months.
18 months would be?
Would be the goal for uh, being able to have automated payments other than what we presently offer.
I, I genuinely, first off, I have the utmost respect for you, Director, and, and Acting Director Garbark. Developed a wonderful relationship with you both over the years and just think the world of you all. I think that's a very aggressive schedule, considering the issues associated with water billing, the issues that we've had with Workday implementation and just one segment kind of on the HR side. If that, that's what you believe and that's the expectation that you want to set, far be it from me to tell you how to do your job. But I do believe it's important to share with you whether or not I think that's realistic. One thing that would be very helpful, I think, for us, Mr. Chair, if I may ask, is if uh, DPW slash finance slash the mayor's office could put a quick blurb in writing, that could be the standard language that we respond to constituents with. Even if it's just a couple bullets or a paragraph, it doesn't, not asking for a whole lot of work here. But to kind of summarize this in, in layman's terms, right? Not for an IT professional or a finance professional or someone who's an expert in water billing, but for Jack or Jill neighbors so they understand that we can send just a paragraph and this question comes up, here you go. We've, we've kind of, you know, dumbed it down for, for everyone who's not an expert in this stuff.
Yeah, I think I would push back on that, Councilman Costello. Uh, we would issue such a statement once we're further along, maybe like towards the end of Phase Two, when we really had detailed timeline for Phase Three. So
Let me, let me
Not opposed to issuing the statement, but I think it's premature at this point in time. Plus, I'm sure I'll, I'll be uh, appearing before the council, giving updates on Workday, and we'll be able to provide a more detailed timeline and have more discussion about this.
So I appreciate that, Director. Let me take back my previous request. Let me frame the question a different way. When, when council members get the question about why we don't have automatic billing, um, I think we know how to answer it. But when they ask, are we ever going to get automatic billing? How would the administration prefer that we answer that question? Because I want to answer it in a way that's consistent with what you all are planning, right?
Yeah, the, the city is planning to offer automated payments. And at this point in time, uh, the implementation is to be determined, but it is a priority of the administration.
Okay. Thank you. No, that's helpful. I hope my question didn't come across the wrong way. I'm just
Oh, no, not at all.
This is up, again, it's a, it's a brave new world for me that I'm hearing this today. I'm excited about it. Honestly.
Mr. Chairman, to the extent for the UMAX system, it's simply a function that has not been activated. So it's inbuilt into the system anyway, and it can be app, um, app, can be activated whenever. So that, that's, it's not a, the UMAX system is not going to require um, necessarily work on that side.
All right, thank you for that. Um, Dr. Garbark, uh, just going back a little bit, um, regarding this new consumer group um, that was in legislation from last term, how many, uh, how many people are going to be part of that team?
Um, I need to check. I can't recall. I think we initially have five positions, including a supervisor, as of now, that have been funded and approved.
And are they going to be empowered to actually resolve water billing issues or are they just an intermediary?
So to something that's being discussed now, because their do, their job is to kind of do both. Advocate on behalf of a customer as well as be in appeals of a water billing decision. So the way we're trying to, to, to look at these things, and again, the four or five is the initial amount. We know that that isn't what can be done for, for everything, but that's, that's sort of an initial amount. But seeing how we can work this out so that there's adequate number of people to basically be the advocate. And, and in my mind, the way it's kind of working is the advocate would in essence be representing the customer to the appeals folks and would be able to use the terminology and the um, the, the, the lingo and, and know the process to be able to articulate the concerns. So, so that, to that extent, we have to sort of be separated from um, the, the other folks in that office, but we are working through that. And one of the good things um, about all of this is we've formed a very good partnership with the Environmental Control Board. And obviously, that's something hearing officers and, and appeals and other things is something that they are very interested in and have a lot of knowledge in. So um, I think we're going to be able to find some way of all of that working out in, in short order and certainly by the time the bill um, is effective.
So they won't be able to go in and actually make an adjustment and fix the situation?
So they will be able to make a determination. And the determination then goes to, because it all is within the Department of Public Works, because only the department can actually change bills. The recommendation is going to go to the director. The director will sign off um, on that. That was the same thing the way it was with the informal hearings. Uh, the director just signed off on it and I don't foresee the director changing a decision of, of these bodies, the, the appeals bodies if, if they have articulated the reasons and have made sure that that is um, applied properly.
Okay, I mean, because that's something that we're going to certainly circle back um, on this topic, especially as they get rolled out because we, we clearly heard loud and clear, the first thing in this hearing was that we have to get rid of that backlog of 2,000 cases. And so any new additional people working in this orbit have to be able to be contributing towards reducing that backlog. And so creating an extra step. Um, so we will circle back on that. I will turn it back over to uh, uh, Councilman Conway for more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I want to um, go back a little bit. Um, in, in my opening, I alluded to um, some of the larger issues, larger um, users that were having issues and hadn't received bills in, in a decade. Um, you know, Ritz Carlton was one of them. Um, Johns Hopkins had a, a, a unit that wasn't getting billed. Uh, WR Grace also. Um, has DPW gone back to pursue payment for any of these instances? Um, and you also, in, in the course of answering one of the earlier questions, alluded to um, 1,200 meters that were being prioritized. Are these being prioritized amongst those 1,200? How are you guys handling that?
So um, yeah, th- this is, the, the cases you're, you're talking about, Councilman, um, are cases where there was never a meter activated in the system. And it, it's, the account was activated because the account takes into um, takes the stormwater feeds into, into account. So there was a water account activated in the system. The meter itself was never programmed into the system so that that um, information was never being transmitted to the, uh, to the billing system. So when we looked at the meter, and for, for instance, the Ritz Carlton, that meter was installed in 2007. It was never entered into the old system. So we never even had record of it to change it out to a new digital system. But we were able to look at the reading on it. We knew when it was installed. And we looked at the reading on it and we knew how much water there was. So the issue was just going back and trying to calculate um, what the bill was based on the rates that were in effect at some of the various periods of time. And some of the more complex issues have been, when, when was it occupied? When wasn't it occupied? These types of things. So um, the, these cases, the Ritz in general, um, I know of, and some of the other larger ones have gotten into um, settlement discussions between attorneys. So that's where some of these things are um, to try to negotiate and try to find some settlement um, to get to these, these places for that. But these are specifically and, and pretty unique to very few cases that, that did never even had a meter registered in the system of billing. The 1,200 have a meter. And we think, or it is thought that it's not working properly. So indications are that the bills might not be as high or might not be working properly. These 1,200, given the complexity and, and the size and the maintenance of these larger meters, are going to need um, to be inspected and addressed and, and repaired um, to make sure that we're getting what we, what we're owed from those meters.
Thanks for clarifying. Um, the other question I had was with regard to uh, the, the contracts that we've, we've used since bringing on the new system. Um, you know, we, as I alluded to earlier, we spent uh, $133 million um, between the initial contract, the installation and the, the fixes, the follow-up, so on and so forth. Um, how have those contracts been going? Are we, are we seeing the results that we, we expect and need to see? Um, if you can give me some, just more, more context on, on how those are going.
Sure. Um, the, the, the bulk of that money um, is, is between two different contracts. Um, Itron being one of them, and the original Itron contract was for installation of the meters, of the BERTs, the ERTs, the transmitters and the lids. So that's 400,000 meters that had to be taken out, had to be disposed of, and new ones had to be procured through them and then installed. And, and there's a specific type of meter that, that is, is being used. The other thing is the transmitter, the device that The other thing is the transmitter, the device that is transmitting the data. Is something that Itron owns. They own that frequency. They own that, that, um, that design, that service. So there's a user fee that we pay for that. We are also paying them to maintain the receivers. So these are the, the receivers and the repeaters. These are the fixed assets we have. Uh, the various locations around the city to collect the data and then send it to, to, to the city for, for, um. Translating into, into bills. So that's the Itron piece right there. The other big, um, expense was Itinerous. Itinerous owns the, um, U Mac system. And that has been, um. Pay, you know, we've had to pay to implement all of that, to migrate all of the data over. And we also, as part of that contract, have, um, support, uh, services that are provided. Now, when these contracts were issued. It was sort of everything Itron related is, related was put into one contract for Itron. Everything Itinerous related was put into one contract for Itinerous. Now that we've moved past the meter installation, we've moved past data migration, all of that. These contracts are more in support, managed support or managed service mode. And the contracts need to be rethought, how they're developed. They need to be a split between services and equipment or, or whatever. So that's something that we're, we're trying to pursue with procurement. To make it a little more standardized and make it, um, more understandable. And easier to, to analyze and, and to, um, to verify what's going where and, and, and how that's working. I will say this, the Itinerous contract. We have had to rely on Itinerous for direct support for our system. A lot more than we intended. We have seen a lot of the workers and, and others within the city. Um, not feel, not feel comfortable and not necessarily understand. How the billing system works. Again, I, I mentioned earlier, that's just a change, a paradigm shift from an older, more, more. Manual paper-based system to an electronic digital one. And it's been a challenge for people to, to learn that system. So we have had to rely on Itinerous more than we really wanted to. Um, the other large contract, uh, from that overall amount is. Um, when it comes to our larger meters. Uh, we have to have a contractor to maintain them and one of them is called Vanguard. Vanguard, um, maintains monitors and calibrates the larger meters. Um, on an annual basis so that they are actually working appropriately. So that is, um, one of the other contracts that's there. But the two largest ones that account for that overall amount is the Itinerous and the Itron contracts.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I have actually one more question, if, if I'm allowed to ask.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I, I, I appreciate the, the insight, especially around Itinerous. Um, you know, as, as I read through this report, I understood that, um, some of our employees struggled. Uh, to understand how to operate some of the machinery, um, sometimes installing incorrectly and otherwise. Um, and we then had to rely on Itinerous to, to help us in that regard. Um, have we, on a, on a broader scale, including these, these instances, but, um, more broadly, um. Begun to identify some of these systemic issues? Uh, whether it be by training or, um, you know, I think another good example is, um. Where we installed bypass or when we, um, installed bypasses and maybe forgot to, to, um, turn on a meter. Instances like that where we've identified systemic issues that can hopefully stop us from making these mistakes going forward.
Absolutely. That's, that's one of the major pieces in the meter shop review is to standardize. The, the process and to make sure that there's, um. Uh, worksheets and information and, and training and the tools necessary. Um, for the meter tech to evaluate the issue with the meter. And also, and this is where some things had been lacking, to ensure that the supervisor of the tech. Is adequately going out and assessing and making sure that the performance is, is, is meeting. Um, the, the, the baseline and correcting it if it's not. Similarly, on the, um, billing side, we need to make sure that people are, are trained. And we have worked with Itinerous quite a bit. Um, and one of the things we are doing that I have done is, um, we have stopped. Some of the onsite, um. Direct support. I mean, Itinerous is still there, but some of the folks who used to be onsite all the time are no longer there. And we are now working with our own team to make sure that we are managing the system and not relying. Because I believe we ended up relying more on the vendor and not pushing some of our, our team to, um. To take this up and to learn it and, and to take some ownership of it. So yes, those are all things that, that we are working on.
Yeah. Thank you for, for those examples. I, 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 I sent over a ton of questions to you guys early. I know you didn't have a ton of, uh, time to prepare those in advance of this hearing. Um, I'd love if you could answer that question and give some examples of systemic changes that you guys have implemented since this report came out. That'd be just super helpful and understand what we've learning, what we've learned. Um, from implementing these changes. Um, and I think this will be something. Fortunately and unfortunately, that we can hopefully, um, you know, take to other contracts that we, we see going forward. Uh, thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to.
Councilman Burnett?
Uh, my, I'm going to pass, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the line of questions I had were already covered and responsive.
Okay, uh, Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Um. Uh. So I'm wondering about, I'm going to follow up on my colleague's line of questioning around the contracts for my first question, um, in this round. Um, there, uh, we hired a company to redo the meters. Uh, install new meters and we expected them to work. And many did not. Um. And yet we're still working with this company to try to fix the issue. Have we, did we have to pay them extra to help us fix an issue that was their problem? Have we, uh, have they been penalized in any way? What is the now, are we still paying them for this work that, you know, should have been done right the first time?
So, yes, you, you, you raise, yes, you raise a good question. Um. We, we have not necessarily seen, we've, we've, there's obviously been a lot of problems. It's not necessarily clear in all the cases who or how the issue occurred. We have had a lot of issues where, for whatever reason. We've sent texts out or, or others and. They have not properly handled the equipment and, and, and caused it to not work properly. There are other things where we believe the vendor may have done it. There, there's really nothing definitive that allows us to go to the vendor and say that they were neglecting. They neglected their work or didn't perform it properly. Um, but that being said, I do know the city solicitor has, uh, gone in to do a more detailed review of the contract language. To see what is there. I mean, nothing, um, that, that we have necessarily points directly at Itron. As having not lived up to their contract. Um, it, it's just so many other pieces or things or, or entities have touched these meters and these meter vaults. That we don't exactly know where or when some of these issues occurred. It could also be when it's been linked to the system and the electronic system wasn't pulling that information properly. We had to send a tech out, something was done improperly, those types of issues. Um, and then again, there's 400,000 of them. So inevitably there are likely some that, that were installed incorrectly.
And then, uh, um, just as a follow-up real quick, if I can, Mr. Chair, the, um. When we contracted with this company, did we know that there were some errors in other parts of the U S where they had been working? Um, has this happened in other places?
Not, not to my knowledge, the issues that we're seeing, well, first of all, let me say the, the, we. Very few, if any, other jurisdictions are doing what we're doing with all of these changes to digital to that extent. But the issues in terms of just the meters themselves. Um, there's nothing that I'm aware of or have seen that raises this, um. To a level where the, the product is defective or the company is not performing properly. A lot of places use these exact type of meters. A lot of places use these exact type, this vendor all over the world.
Thank you. Uh, my second question is, um, slightly is different. Um. In the old system, there were, some households had one meter size. And other households had a different meter size and they were billed differently depending on the meter size. So for instance. Years ago, before I got married, I was living in Full Stream Homes at Montebello. I had a huge house. My meter was a larger meter. My boyfriend, now husband at the time, living in Charles Village. The only one in his house, smaller house, had a smaller meter and paid less. So when we did the, and, and to me, that's, you know, just given the fact that, you know, Full Stream Homes at Montebello, traditionally black neighborhood. In Charles Village, a white neighborhood, you know, that sort of, you know, sparked, um, some questions that I had about. Whether or not sort of these bigger meters are in certain areas and the smaller meters are in other areas. And was that fixed with the system now that we all, are we all with the same meter? Because it, when we get a bigger meter, that family is billed more, even though it's not necessar, that's my understanding anyway. Um, even though it's not, um, it's, it's the same consumption. So is, has that problem been fixed?
So, um, so what we've done in this system is we have attempted to change some of that. So what we were finding, what, what ended up happening in the old system. Is that residents, specifically residents, um, who may not have had much for many people in their household. Were ending up paying a lion's share of the cost. There were, there was also minimum billing. So no matter how much you used, if you use nothing, you still got a minimum bill. One of the things we have now looked to do is create a separate fee called an infrastructure fee. The infrastructure fee is not based on your consumption at all. It is based on your meter size. The size being that the larger your meter, the more. Effort is needed by the system to pump the water through this, through the meter. For residential meters, you're looking at either a five eighths inch meter or a three quarters inch meter. Those are the, the smallest meters we have. That cost is very minimal. What we have done is now for larger commercial properties that have a three inch, a four inch, five, six inch meter. They are paying a much larger infrastructure cost. The idea being that they are putting more load on the system. Of, of pumping stations, of, of, of treatment, of, um, storage tanks and other things to, um. Pull that through the system and use that water. So it has shifted that burden to a certain extent on some of our commercial and industrial properties. Who are using and putting more strain on the system and away from residences. The issue with three quarter and five eights, it's, it's a very. It, it basically that is, is just on the distance from the main to a residence. As well as if there's any hills in the area that need that pumping pressure to go up. So that's the only change there that, that, um, that would be to that extent. So now if you don't use any water, there, there's a small infrastructure charge for residential meters. But the volume, there is no bit, minimum volume charge. So this was an attempt to distribute some of that fixed asset charge. To those who are actually putting more strain on the system.
So the, uh, just as a follow-up, so the, the reason that some areas get a larger meter. Is because of the effort it needs to take to pump. The, the councilman's, um, you know, going to correct me on that. I don't. I don't understand why some areas get one size meter and the others get other size meter and there's a difference in pay and how much is billed.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in and help the director here?
Uh, Director, do you need help?
Uh, I, yes, I would love some, yes.
You go.
So the. So there's a couple of things. The, the director has explained some of it. Some of it also has to do with changes to the building code in 2008. Which requires sprinklers in single-family homes. If you have a sprinkler, you're required to have a one inch meter versus a five eighth inch meter. Because you have to, the, the, the. Service tie-in connection from the, from the large water main in the street to, to inside the actual property. Has to be able to support a higher amount of pressure. In order to facilitate the sprinkler actually working during what we hope is a never event. But is a one in 100 or one in 200 year event. So in 2017, we had worked out an arrangement with the Department of Public Works. Around single-family homes that have a one inch meter. Versus those that have a five eighth inch meter. And, and that's at the time, and, and Ms. Collins was very involved in these conversations. We found no disparities based on race and neighborhoods. This was about when the properties were built. And this is also, um, a lot of this has to do with the developer, the, the home builder. Who is building the property in some cases in, uh, infill, uh, land developments. Uh, where you have, you know, a, a mass of, of properties being built at one time. Great examples are in Locust Point in my district. Um, Greety Town in Councilman Cohen's district. We've got large infill development. Uh, there is a, another issue of whether or not the developer decides to have one meter to service that entire. Um, development of homes. Or whether or not they have, uh, smaller meters, uh, to service each home individually. And in addition, you even have a hybrid of that, which, which I, I think further complicates things. Having lived through the pain of trying to understand this back in 2017. I will say that there is absolutely no correlation between race or income. And the size of the meters. It's driven by a number of other factors, predominantly when the houses were built. For example, if you look at Hope Six communities like. Uh, Heritage Crossing, uh, towns at the terraces in the northeast part of, of Popleton. Which borders Councilman, uh, Bullock's district, but it's in my district, which are predominantly, and by predominantly, I mean like 99 plus percent. Um, black neighborhoods, they have the same issue. Uh, with these one inch meters and we're built, being billed this additional infrastructure charge. So back in 2017. Uh, when, uh, DPW first transitioned, uh, to having, uh, the, um. The, the fee for the infrastructure charge and Marcia re- recalls these conversations. At the time, a five eighth inch meter, uh, was, uh. $15.22 per month for the infrastructure fee, right? Whereas, uh, a, uh, one inch meter, uh, if my memory serves me correctly, was $60.88. And when you added that up, it was a $503 difference. And it was certainly, uh, not equitable. Uh, DPW, um, at the time, and, and I think Matt was in, in the, in the mayor's office back then. Um, but his, but Matt has always been helpful on these issues. Um, Director Chow worked with us to come up with a compromise to ensure that there was essentially equity. Because the bottom line was that a family. That's black, that was in Heritage Crossing, that is using the same amount of water. Is a family that is white, that's in Locust Point, that's using the same amount of water. As someone in whatever neighborhood in whatever part of the city. Irrespective of the size of their meter, should at the end of the day, pay the same thing. And those newer homes shouldn't be penalized for the fact that, well, they were built after the changes to the building code, right? And that there was these new requirements that if you're built after this certain date, you had to have a sprinkler. And if you have to have a sprinkler, then the home builder has to build, it has to include a larger tie-in. If you have a larger tie-in, you need a larger meter, get the larger meter, you get the larger infrastructure fee. Anyway, I, I. I'm not trying to correct anyone. I hope I did, that my comments or remarks on this topic have not come across. As, as, um, interrupting or offensive to either Councilwoman Ramos or Acting Director Garbar. I'm only sharing. Unfortunately, I know far more about this one issue than I would ever care to know. And just want to share the pain that I have gone through over the years to help clarify this. So I hope that this has been helpful. And Marcia, if I've spoken out of school at all here, because you've been with me each step of the way, I know that you will correct me.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Now, you're accurate. I, I would tell you, Councilwoman Ramos, that. Uh, the most, um, meters we have in the ground are five eights, which are the smallest. And they tend to be the row houses and the, you know, the semi-detached and the occasional detached home. Um, but, uh, the, the whole purpose and sizing of the meter is to ensure that adequate. Water in by volume and by pressure can service that household. So you might have homes that look similar, but one might. So you might have homes that look similar, but one might have one bathroom and one might have three bathrooms and a laundry room and be on a hill. So it's all about what you need to support the home itself and what volume and pressure and the rest of the infrastructure is needed to get that volume and pressure to that home. And that's why we have the infrastructure charge and why it varies by meter size. People who believe that they have too large of a meter can always ask to have it downsized, but what they need to do is get an engineer to say that, yes, it would downsize this particular meter to this home. Now, if you've got the interior sprinkler system, then yeah, you're gonna need a one-inch meter for that god-awful time when a fire should occur. You want that water to flow and flow appropriately and do its job. So that's why, at the time, DPW considered that to be, you know, the change in code, to be something that we could accommodate through an adjustment in that charge. But thank you to you both.
Thank you, Marcia, and thank you, Councilman Costello and Director Garbar. I'm gonna offer, I'm gonna volunteer Councilman Costello to help, uh, help you on the weekends with some of that backlog where there's 2,000 cases.
Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. All right, next up, Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question. I know my colleague of the 11th district was earlier talking, just getting clarification on a timeline, and it spurred a question for me. The monthly, the monthly rate structure, i- is that something that's set in stone? And I know I've had just several people that just have shared their view of, oh my goodness, I would love to get back quarterly, you know, if there was some way to do that. Are we set to just have that monthly rate structure as you move forward with this timeline for our automated system?
Uh, yeah, yes, that's, that was the intent. That's the, the, the way we looked for, that's the way our rates are set up. That's obviously a policy call. That was a determination by the Board of Estimates when they approved the rates. Obviously, they can change that, but the way the system is currently and the way we have structured the rates, it is on a monthly basis.
Okay. I would suggest maybe some down, down the road through this timeline, if there's, maybe you put out a survey just to get a feel of how people are feeling about the monthly versus the, you know, just to, just to get that information, I think would also be helpful as we're moving forward.
Uh, Councilman, um, do you think the reason why they look back fondly, fondly on the quarterly system when we used to get constant complaints about minimum billing and quarterly payments?
I think it's one of those things where, you know, there's some people that are just so into their routine and you're adding on another monthly payment when they had prepared, and these are older adults that I seem to be getting this from. They were, they, you've been so used to, you know, and people that are on fixed budgets and fixed incomes, they just had to, have to restructure their whole, you know, the money that's coming into their home and trying to figure out how to do that monthly instead of just putting it aside, like, you know, you're kind of putting it aside, building up that amount for quarterly, and it seems to be harder to do it monthly.
That's interesting because the, the concept was to provide people with that regular, not having to worry about or paying other things, and then the quarterly bill arrives and they realize they don't have the money. So there are a number of reasons why we looked at it. But when we switched and did the rates, we made sure that as part of that process, it was a, it was a net zero change. In other words, you weren't paying more because you went to monthly. So we wanted to make sure that that did not happen. And then we changed the rate set, uh, system from a declining, which meant if you used more water, you paid less per unit, to a flat rate where everyone pays the same for a unit of water. So there were a number of changes that happened that I think people weren't aware of at the time, even though we talked about them, because so much was going on for that transition. I know we, you remember, we were briefing every three months because we wanted everybody to keep current, so.
That's right.
It is a hard transition for everyone.
Yeah. And like I said, it is, the, the, if the complaints on that issue seem to be coming from older adults, single people that live alone in their homes and just, you know, they just find it hard to add that monthly bill. And again, they're not, you know, the older adult too is not, they're still learning a new technology. So it's a number of things that come into play. So I, I just wanted to throw that awareness out there.
And, and Councilman, I'll just also add that there are additional features for billings, such as budget billing, that we do have the potential for the UMAC system. There are ways to, to other, also schedule different ways of paying and, and putting money aside or credits or other things that, you know, once we work out, you know, having automatic payments and other things, that'd open, that'd open a lot of doors to other potential improvements to make it easier for, for folks.
Okay. Thank you. Good information.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you. Council Vice President got to the conversation I was gonna have again, because I think about, so in my district in the 7th, we are starting to get a lot of infill housing. So the one meter versus the individual meters is a recurring issue that we're finding. My question is, and this goes back to when we get these new developments, what type of oversight do we have in terms of how these things are, decision-making goes through to either help select those type options? Whether it's one meter or the hybrid, as Councilman Costello mentioned, I just want to know, what do we do as a, as a city to guide them through those conversations?
So, so for developments, whenever you're hooking up to the city system, whether it's sewer, whether it's water, or even storm drains, we have, there is a developer's review, the developer's agreement that has to be developed, and the city has to review the plans. Now, the plans are for the connections. So the water connection from, you know, the, the meter to the, the service line to the property. We rely on a professional engineer to stamp those designs and approve them, putting their seal as a professional engineer on the line to say that that is a certified, adequate, appropriate way to, to construct the, the property. So we don't question how they have internally structured that. We just make sure that what they have and the connections to the city are appropriate and are certified from a professional engineer. We then look at where, how, and, and the overall pull on the system to make sure that they have adequate, uh, pressure and that there's redundancy in the system so that you don't have these dead ends that can stagnate water. But to your point about the meter, that is decided on a developer-by-developer basis. There are different approaches, different developers take, but so long as it's stamped by a professional engineer and it is designed and approved by, by an engineer to meet the, the basic needs of the, of the, of the development, the city does not do anything or review or overturn or anything like that.
Thank you. And my next question has to do with process and responsiveness. I know that we, you guys have the backlog. My question is, once we receive a complaint, how fast do we interact with the person just to manage our expectations on the investigation and resolution? Because often I find that we hear people reach out and then they're waiting to hear back. And often we, we followed up or we have our office follow up. Because one of the things that we're learning is that if we manage expectations and that we may have this resolved in a certain number of months or for a certain number of days, we manage those expectations. But how do we, how does your agency communicate when they come in contact with persons? And what is the expectation of our customer service?
So, Ms. Taylor, are you still on? Do you wanna?
Yes. Yes, I can answer that. Um, so you're absolutely correct, Councilman. There is room for major improvement in the manner of which we communicate. Our current process at the moment is that we answer emails and customer service complaints within 15 business days unless there's an escalation coming from the Councilman Office or our executive leadership team. We answer within five business days or sooner. One thing that we recently, we have implemented is that although we are, we, we, we cannot resolve the complaint or concern the same day, one thing that we've recently implemented within the last couple of weeks is that we ensure that our agents are doing follow-up emails to say, hey, we're still, we do know that we still have this open case. We're still just providing an update line. You know that we're still working on the case and we'll keep you updated on the progress of resolution. Some of the resolutions, or nine times out of 10, the resolution is that we could even be waiting for some documentation from the customer and we might have to nudge the customer to say, do you have the, the documentation so that we can move forward? Or we could be waiting for some inspections or things from another department. And so we work close with, with different departments. Meter Shop being one of CSSD, we work closely together to ensure that we can get these inspections and things of that nature completed. But what you will see, going, what you will see moving forward is more of that communication as far as a follow-up email to say we're still working on the customer complaint and providing more details until the resolution is completed.
And I want to just add that customers are not required to pay anything while their account is being reviewed.
Absolutely. Yes. We, we let the customer know that they aren't required to pay. However, we do advise that they do make good faith payments.
As a follow-up, for the faith payments, how do we, so how do we determine what that amount is? Because what I've found, and I had this instance with one resident where their water bill was around $75 a month. It skyrocketed to 300 in one month, and then the next month is a higher amount. So do we go, does that faith payment be based off of a whole year's usage? Or what the, what the average of the 12-month period looks like? I'm just wondering, so it's like transparent to make sure that we have a, we, we have a right line rule. I just want to make sure.
So the faith payment isn't this, you're not required to pay anything while the account's being reviewed. It is, a lot of people think, I don't know why I use this amount. I want to pay what I normally pay. So that would be, you know, what they think they should or, or would be reasonable to pay. We encourage them to do that so that, the, the issue is this can take some time to review. It can take over a month or two months to review, especially if there are leaks and there needs to be a replacement of a pipe or something. It can take a while and we don't want a customer to get so in arrears that they then get into a problem where they're struggling to pay and can't pay the bill. So we can work with them on what something reasonable would be or what they feel is reasonable, but they're not entitled or required to, uh, pay, pay that.
In addition, I wanted to also bring up the fact that before a water bill exceeds, gets excessive, customers have the option to sign up for the online portal. The online portal is a tool that our customers can use to manage and set alerts to alert them of high usage or usage that they feel as though is, is higher than normal. It allows them to check their hourly and daily usage. And a lot of customers are not taking advantage of that tool, which, which could help them tremendously identify a leak in toilet the same day that the leak is occurring. So that's one thing that, you know, we have under, we have around 3% of the customers that utilize the portal. They can also, we get a lot of customers just asking for copies of water bills. That, that tool is available on the portal where they can pull their past water bills, see previous histories and things of that nature.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I love that portal. I actually use it for my own water bill. But I, I mistakenly found out about it by just randomly reading something, the, the calendar that comes in the mail. I'm just wondering how are we communicating that to the public? Because if I, as a person who, who manages and makes sure that my water bill is paid and discover this tool, how do we make sure that is more broadly aware that the public has, knows about this?
Well, we did do a campaign some years ago where we, I was the customer service manager at that time, and I was a part of that campaign where we actually had people sign up to come to various locations, libraries that were the locations. We would have, we would have hundreds of people sign up, but maybe five or six people actually showed up to sign up for the portal. We even, we were offering training, one-on-one training at that time. We were offering to actually get them the access and set them up at the portal, for the portal at that time, but we did not have a great turnout. Our liaisons that work in our media and communication division had, did a wonderful job in promoting that, but we did not have a great turnout.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And I would just want to say thank you to your communications team, because they did, they did make this, make my, at our town hall last month, they did make the public aware of it. So we have people who are interested in learning more about it. And I would encourage my fellow council members to actually help with getting the word out because what this does is help a number of the constituents that were on the call to actually learn about their own usage and what's happening. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
And next up, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anita, I just wanted to take a, a second to publicly acknowledge you and how responsive you've been and everyone on your team. I just wanted to say thank you. Really appreciate it. And I wanted Director Garbar to, and everyone else to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Conway?
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else with any, any other council members with any questions before we move on to panel and public testimony? No? Okay. Councilman Conway, do you mind introducing your panel? And I will have Richard elevate them to panelists.
Give me one moment.
Okay.
All right. We have Jade McDuffie McClary.
What was the first name, Councilman? It's how it's ordered. Jade McDuffie?
Jade McDuffie McClear, McClary.
Okay.
Jamie Lee.
Uh-huh.
And Rihanna Echol.
Go on.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so members of that panel, if you can turn on your cameras and, and. present, uh, give your presentation. Councilman, do you have any particular order or...?
Uh, no, I don't. I think we can, um, we can start off with, with Jade.
Thank you, Councilman. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, good afternoon, Chairman Schleifer and the honorable members of this committee. My name is Jade McDuffie McClary, and I'm a staff attorney in the Home Preservation Project at the Probono Resource Center of Maryland. Um, thank you to each of you for your, for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the Baltimore city residents that we see each and every day in our various legal clinics. Um, through our Utility Bills Clinic, PBRC, and our partner, NVLS, Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service, and we advocate for low-income Baltimore city residents with utility bill issues, helping to stabilize our finances and preserve home ownership. We also coordinate tax sale prevention clinics, which prior to recent legislation, and thank you all for your hard work on that, prevented copious amounts of residents from losing their homes from overdue water bills during the tax sale. The City County Office of the Inspector General's Report on the Department of Public Works released last year only confirms issues with utility bills, especially water bills, um, that are a constant problem for Baltimore city's low-income residents. According to calculations by attorney and economist Roger Colton, the average customer's water bill is expected to rise to one thousand one hundred fifteen dollars by 2022, more than triple the average bill of three hundred and fifty dollars in 2010. Beyond the high cost of water service, Baltimore also has a long history of significant problems with the billing errors, as we've discussed today, and as detailed in the report that brings us here today. Discount programs for low-income residents remain very cumbersome and nearly impossible to access. This is why our clinic uses volunteer attorneys actually to advise clients of their rights into assisting them in negotiating for payment plans and adjustments to incorrect and inflated meter readings. You should not need a lawyer to get assistance with your water bill, but that is the reality for Baltimore city residents. Just last month, our Utility Bills Clinic assisted two clients with very high water bills. One client, I'll refer to her as Anna, is a fifty-three-year-old resident of 21211. Anna currently has a five thousand dollar outstanding water bill, and this bill has accumulated over time as Anna's not been employed since March due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our volunteer attorney, um, in our clinic, educated Anna about the BH2O Assist Program, and a staff attorney from NVLS is negotiating a payment plan with DPW, although it has taken several weeks and many calls to find the contact person within the department to begin this payment plan process. The other client who I'll call Ayesha is a sixty-year-old resident of 21201. Ayesha currently has a three thousand dollar water bill, unlike Anna is unemployed currently. Uh, Ayesha applied for BH2O Assist in November 2020, but her application has yet to be processed and her credit has not been applied to her account. Once that credit is applied, we will then, um, like our other client, begin negotiation for a payment plan for Ayesha. And unfortunately, we've seen many more issues in our clinics. These are just a few. Some clients just don't understand why or how their water bills have skyrocketed. We also go into, um, as was mentioned earlier, um, information about water leaks and, and how to get those things tested and meters tested. But as the OIG's report confirmed, thousands of digital water meters in the city and county are not fully functional, and as was mentioned, um, in the OIG's report, like Anna and Ayesha, there are about eight thousand outstanding tickets, and as we discussed today, about two thousand currently, um, outstanding disputes. And while the Water Accountability and Equity Act would create a new dispute resolution process that was explained a bit today, um, through the Office of Water Customer Advocacy, more needs to be done as detailed in this report. So I ask that you just continue to work toward implementing the Water Accountability and Equity Act. Thank you to the department for the work they've already, um, started doing to implement the act by July one. In addition, we ask that you continue as counsel to have discussion about fixing problems identified in this report, such as the inaccurate meters and contract management. Um, thank you all for your time and for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much. Er, i- is the panel open to answering questions from the committee? Yeah, okay, so if I can just ask a first question. Can you clarify, um, if I heard correctly, you said that, uh, the Rog- Roger Colton study said individual home's water bill is going to be a thousand dollars by 2022?
Right, I think that just refers to the consistent rate increases we've had, um, last one being in October. So from that time in 2010, as we get to, you know, further along, you know, water bills are going to be essentially unaffordable and currently are unaffordable frankly for many, many residents.
So is that, and is that annual or per bill would be a thousand?
Um, I believe that's annual. Um, Jamie Lee, Professor Lee is also on this call. Um, I know they've done some work with, um, Roger Colton as well. Um, there's also, um, Rihanna Echol from the Right to Water Coalition, so they may be able to get into that a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, that estimate is for annual, not monthly.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Um, and who, is there any other questions, um, for, um, Ms. Jade before we move on to the next person on the panel? Seeing none? Um, we can move on to the next person, uh, Councilman Conway, who, who would that be?
Uh, it's going to be Jamie Lee.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, Chairman and honorable members of the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. My name is Jamie Lee, and I'm an associate professor at the University of Baltimore School of Law and a member of the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify. I applaud the attention being paid to making sure water bills are accurate and fair. And nearly four years ago, scores of residents testified at a similar investigatory hearing about shockingly high bills and little success in resolving them, and this included homeowners, landlords, business owners, deed recorders, seniors, and multifamily housing providers. And I, I worked personally with a client who, in fact, refused to sign up for water service because they simply did not trust the system to overbill them, uh, to not overbill them. And as it sounds like many of your constituents are also conveying to you, these stories are countless and they continue to accumulate. And so it is with real relief and appreciation that we are hearing today that accurate bills are a top priority. I wouldn't like to highlight that accurate bills alone, however, will not solve the crisis that customers are in. What we also need are systemic changes to how customers are treated, and one key part of this is affordability. We know that if bills are correct but still remain unaffordable, then the harms of shut-offs and of sacrificing other necess- necessities in order to pay for water, those harms will still continue. And billing corrections alone will also not solve other serious problems. If people continue to have difficulty in borrowing in payment plans and other affordability programs, just as my colleague Jade McClary just mentioned, then these harms will continue. And if people continue to lack support in finding and fixing leaks and getting other necessary useful information, then the harms will continue. And if people continue to have difficulty communicating about their concerns, then these harms will continue. So fortunately, they're already passed forward. As many of you noted, the Water Accountability and Equity Act awaits implementation, and it addresses complaints and also, um, addresses system-wide issues of affordability, of customer communications, program enrollment barriers, and other concerns. And it does this through a dedicated customer advocate office. It has formal and ongoing committee oversight, full transparency, data-driven analysis, and it uses the input of customers themselves to design the solutions and revise policies and to impose long-term accountability. So this law, we firmly believe it will make Baltimore a model for good government, and we wholeheartedly look forward to its timely implementation. So I thank the committee for your time and greatly appreciate your commitment to improving the lives of the people of Baltimore.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lee. Uh, any committee questions? Seeing none, uh, we can move on to Ms. Echol.
Thank you so much, Chairman Schleifer and honorable members of the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. Uh, my name is Rihanna Echol, and I'm a senior organizer with Food and Water Action and the convener of the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this afternoon and for your sustained commitment to water justice. Um, and I also want to thank the members of DPW who are here and for all of their hard work, um, implementing the Water Accountability and Equity Act and for answering these questions and being partners in this, um, work to ensure that everyone has affordable, accurate bills. Um, the City County Office of the Inspector General's Report on DPW released last year, um, as my colleague said, it quantifies and confirms what Baltimoreans have been saying for years, um, that our water metering system is not working for people. And despite these system-wide issues, in the past, Baltimoreans faced water shut-offs or tax sales over unaffordable or incorrect bills. The city forced families to live without water or potentially lose their homes over just a few hundred dollars of outstanding bills while corporate entities and actors were given breaks or sometimes never billed. And while we've stopped some of these cruel collections me- mechanisms, um, we do need to address the root of the problem, and I applaud all of your commitment to that. Um, I do want to thank the members of the committee who served on the previous council, especially former Chairwoman Sharon Green Middleton, for taking major steps to reform this broken system by passing the Water Accountability and Equity Act in 2019 and the Water Accountability and Equity Act Modifications Bill, um, last year. So as we've heard from Director Garbark, DPW is working really hard to implement the Water Accountability and Equity Act, um, by July first of this year, and we look forward to partnering with them to make sure that that happens. Um, eh, while it will not address every issue highlighted by the OIG's report, it will take us, um, a major step forward in the right direction. So I have attached with my written testimony a more comprehensive overview of how the Water Accountability and Equity Act will and will not address the concerns raised by the OIG's report, and my, um, fellow coalition members have raised some really important points of the Water Accountability and Equity Act. But one point that I briefly want to highlight that I think will be really important in addressing some of the issues that we've heard today is that the Water Accountability and Equity Act, it will not only create the Office of the Water Customer Advocate, um, but it will also create the Office, or the Committee for Office Oversight, which will hold at least twice yearly public hearings to review the successes and challenges of the Office. Um, the Office will provide data on invest- the number of investigations they're doing, their problem-solving efforts, what the results are, um, they will provide examples of common customer complaints and recommendations for changes to DPW rules, um, regulations or policies that will promote fairness to customers and resolve customer concerns, um, create task forces, any additional staff needed, or other options that will help promote fairness in, um, addressing concerns. So I think that that will be a really key point in addressing, um, a lot of the issues that we've heard today. And while the, um, Water Accountability and Equity Act, it will not address a lot of the hardware concerns raised by the OIG's report or the contact, contract mismanagement. So clearly, uh, more work lies ahead to fix our water system and make it work for all Baltimoreans. Um, there has not been a comprehensive public audit of the water billing system since 2012, and the contracts, um, must be better managed to not waste ratepayer dollars. Um, Baltimoreans have faced nearly ten percent water rate increases for twenty of the past twenty-one years, in part to cover these cost overruns and mismanagement. Um, so as we work to tackle the affordability crisis in our city, we owe it to our communities to spend their money wisely and make the system function better for us all. Uh, so we implore the council, DPW, the Comptroller's Office, the mayor's administration, basically anyone who can, um, to address these issues head-on through a comprehensive audit and action plan, as well as the prompt implementation of the Water Accountability and Equity Act. Um, but we must continue to reject false solutions such as outsourcing or converting DPW into a regional authority. Um, the city has often tried to avoid fixing its mistakes by outsourcing responsibilities, and the OIG's report clearly outlines how we've spent over a hundred and thirty-three million dollars on contracts for the water system and problems are still pervasive. Um, and outsourcing or converting DPW into a regional authority and transferring, um, control of the water and wastewater systems away from elected officials like you all and into the hands of profit-driven companies or an appointed board that is not accountable to constituents, um, will only make water, Baltimore's water billing issues worse. Um, water regionalization is not a silver bullet and could really deepen institutional inequities. Um, an example of that is Detroit, the nation's largest, uh, predominantly black city, had regionalization forced on it during its state-imposed bankruptcy, which transferred control of one of the city's most valuable assets to an entity controlled by the majority white surrounding counties. And the resulting power structure has left Detroit's, um, water advocates unable to implement a comprehensive water affordability program, um, even after more than a decade of advocacy. The, um, the affordability program in the Water Accountability and Equity Act was originally inspired, um, by legislation that activists in Detroit put forward, and they've been advocating for more than a decade and can't get anything through, um, because there are no, um, accountability mechanisms. And so we should absolutely have more collaboration with the county, and it's wonderful to hear that, um, Director Garbark is working with the county on addressing these problems, but we must not see control of our water assets that belong to the people of Baltimore and work towards a more fair, um, equitable water system. So thank you so much for your time and thank you for holding this important hearing, and we look forward to continuing this work with you all to make sure that everyone has safe, uh, and affordable and accurate water.
Thank you very much. Um, any questions for anyone on the panel? Um, Inspector General, go ahead.
Um, I just, uh, since you mentioned the, um, audit, and, um, actually, Councilman Costello, Councilman, um, Schleifer and I serve on the biennial audit committee, and it was actually brought up there that the water billing hadn't been audited. And right now, there's so many changes that are happening, an audit, because with au- with audits, it's usually looking back a year or so. I mean, I want this audit, since it has been so long, to really show what's happening now, so I act, just full transparency, I just wanted to know that I said last night that the audit should probably wait just a little bit till the new system is in place because otherwise we're just looking back on something that's changed. So I just wanted to know that your, your points are so well-taken, but, and we are looking at that. But, um, Eric, if you want to add any more to that, you can. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. Uh, any, go ahead, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um... I, I understand the desire to have an audit. Get that. Um, but it's important to look at what we hope to accomplish with an audit. Uh, I think many of the IG's comments make sense. Um, when we're, the bottom line is that we all recognize that there are, there are systemic issues with the water billing system, and DPW has laid out a course of action to address those issues. Um, but what, what I really wanted to comment on, and I, I paid very careful attention to your, to your testimony, Ms. Lloyd, or Ms. Echol, sorry. Um, there were, on a number of occasions, you, you alluded to the city potentially seeking to essentially privatize its operations around water, and I, I feel like that's something that the city has been crystal clear on that we're not going to do. Um, Acting Director Garbark, can you, can you kind of put that issue to, to rest here? Because I, I feel like we keep talking about this, but the city continues to be clear that we're not going to do it. And, so Matt, can you chime in on that?
Certainly. Um, yeah, there is no intention, no discussions, no desire on the part of the city to, um, to, to do anything like that. And in fact, uh, DPW was, was quite... And in fact, DPW was quite supportive of the Charter Amendment passed, I think, two times, or no, last election, that would prohibit privatization of any water assets. So the city's position hasn't changed, and that is not something that the city is pursuing or considering.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Richard, we are now ready for public testimony. If you can just go down the list, unmute people and ask them if they'd like to testify.
Yes, sir. We've had three persons who have have mailed questions during the hearing, so if you'd like, we can go to them first.
Sure.
Okay, let's see. Bethan Howard. Okay. Elaine Dowley.
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I am the Director of Energy Services for a very large apartment community owner and manager down in your area. We have 30 apartment communities. 26 are in the county. We've been listening for the whole time here, and we're a little bit curious as to what the plan is for the county. We met with Director Chow a couple of years ago, and we were told that meters were going to be changed out, large meters were going to be overhauled, transmitters attached, we were going to be hooked up to the new billing system. Honestly, I've been with the company 10 years, and our problems have been compounding for the past 10 years. On top of it, we randomly get bills where we'll be told we owe $1.4 million in back pay, and we can't figure out where the numbers are coming from. I understand that most of you are dealing with individual homeowners, but as a business, we're audited, we have partners. We have people we need to report to, so we have to be very, very clear. When you send us a large bill, we've been making good faith payments, just so you know. But at some point, we're going to have to come to terms in understanding what you're charging for, what period of time it's covering, how much the rate is. You know, we expect almost a full spreadsheet to go with this. So I guess if you could start with where are we on the meter overhaul in the county? And the process moving forward, so we get on the new monthly billing system. I would appreciate that.
Yeah, so I don't see the county representatives on here anymore.
I think this is wrong, if I look at it.
Hello? I think somebody unmuted. Okay, I don't see any of the county representatives on here. Director Garbark, did you want to speak to that, or should we just connect them with the?
Sure. I can try to address that. So the county is obviously a separate team. They determine how they want to be billed or how they want their customers to be billed. The intention all along, and it's still the intention, is to get both systems on the UMAC system and all systems working correctly. One of the main problems that is giving rise to all of these different issues is that we have two systems, and they're not working together properly. The county is very interested in that, and they are working on their end to make sure that if and that when the UMAC system is deployed and extended, that they can do what they need to do on their end for the sewer charges and those charges. And that's why there's been this sort of dual sort of systems that we have. But the intention is to get everyone on the UMAC system, and that would address a lot of these issues. In terms of the meters, meters should have been overhauled and changed. If not, that's one of the things we are focusing on with the county to identify and prioritize some of the larger developments where they believe and others have reported that the meters are not operating properly, so that we can address them. So that should all be in process. But the billing system issue is one that I think, once we get to that point, the issues won't be there like we're seeing now.
So if I may just follow up, because we understand that basically you read the meter for the water, even if it's in the county, give us a water bill, then that usage is transmitted over to the county and shows up next year on a tax bill for the sewer. So it's kind of, again, we have a problem in 2019 and extends into 2020, and this has been going on for quite a while. So when we need to ask a question about why a meter is not working, are we contacting city or are we contacting county?
City.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm afraid Ms. Taylor knows us rather personally, I think, because we talk to her a lot, but we want to make sure that we're going to the right people.
Certainly.
And unfortunately, you know, we're starting to get to the point now where we're going out to the pits to take pictures. So if you think that all these meters should be working correctly, then we can start to do that and start to clean up some of our accounts, because we have balances showing up, and we'll do the work. We'll work the spreadsheets out, but we just want to know who we can come to and work out an agreement with you and get this cleaned up and current.
Absolutely, yeah. It would be the city. And that's some of the things that we've seen with some of our larger organizations is different individual meters and different accounts can be binded into sort of a lump sum account, and then trying to pull it and string the things apart is where the complexity arises. So yes, that would be the city, and we're happy to work with anyone on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Richard, we can move on to the next one.
Okay, actually, the other two signees are off, so we can go in order now. Aaron Greenfell. Aaron Greenfell. Okay.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Alan Reyes. Alan Reyes.
Yes, hello?
Elaine.
Hi, how are you? My name is Alan Reyes. I'm the president for the town of Eager Park. We were billed, this neighborhood consisted of 49 homes over in Eager Park, and we were billed for a meter that is not the correct size. And we were charged an instructor fee. And we had been dealing with Ms. Marcia Davis, and they were supposed to issue us a credit. And so far, we have not received the credits, or some of us haven't received any correspondence at all. Is there any way that we can get someone to look into it?
Yeah, so I see Director Garbark writing that down. I think he took down the name of the property you're talking about, and I'm sure that they will be following up with you guys.
Please, please. Also, Mr. Chairman, if the person testifying, I don't necessarily want you to give your contact information out over this, but, Mr. Chairman, if we send the information to you, could you then forward it on to us?
Take it somewhere in the chat, and I'll get it to you, Mr. Director.
Thank you. That would be great. Definitely follow up on that.
Thank you so much.
Anybody who's got a specific property issue, instead of an overall umbrella issue, if you can just post the address of the property and your contact information in the chat, we'll get it over to DPW for follow-up.
Absolutely.
Richard, we can move on to the next one.
Okay, next one is Anis. No response, Mr. Chair, to move on. Blair Young. Blair Young. Likewise, no response. Carla Neely. Carla Neely.
No response.
David Pontius.
No response, thanks.
Okay, we already heard from Elaine Dowley. Emily Aprio. Emily Aprio.
I have no comment.
James Batley. James Batley. Something. Okay, moving on. Jessie Keller.
Hi. My name's Jessie Keller. I'm with Maryland Multi-Housing Association. We're a trade association of property management companies. We represent over 200,000 apartment communities across the state and 40,000 rental units in Baltimore City. Many of our members have expressed their frustration to us regarding Baltimore's antiquated water metering and billing system. Management companies receive incorrect bills frequently. Billing disputes often take months to even years to resolve. Even when billing issues are resolved, the disputed charges sometimes reappear in the next billing cycle after the problem's been fixed. The most common complaint we heard from our members was that it's impossible to get in touch with staff at DPW to address these metering and billing concerns. Calls often go on in unreturn, and problems remain unresolved for months, if not years. As my colleague Elaine mentioned, these problems cascade into other jurisdictions like Baltimore County with sewer computed tax bills being incorrect. Our members reported that meters at some properties aren't read consistently and that billing can be sporadic. For example, one of our members did not receive any bills for a year and then received a bill for $80,000. Another company reported not receiving a bill for seven months. And we recommend that usage be included on the same webpage where one can view their balance and that the virtual billing system be improved. Some of our members have had checks lost and even stolen from the city's mailroom, an issue that's still ongoing. Management companies who use third parties for billing have reported these companies still cannot complete their work because the city will not discuss the company's accounts with them, even after letters of authorization have been provided. In conclusion, Baltimore's water billing system continues to remain antiquated and effective, burdensome, and difficult to navigate. We recommend that the city develop a way to promptly investigate incorrect bills in the same billing cycle as the bills to reduce confusion for all parties and improve customer service in resolving disputes. I've sent in written testimony as well as some examples, additional examples our management companies have been experiencing with water metering and billing. Feel free to contact me and follow up if you'd like more information. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay. Next is Kim Sour. Kim Sour.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Check, check, one, two.
Louise Cornell. Louise Cornell. Louise Cornell. She seems to be trying to unmute and unmute, but okay. If you're there, Ms. Cornell, you are muted now. You can go ahead and speak.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. The next caller signing strictly is M. M, are you there? And the next, and the next one is signed is N.R. N.R.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. I stumbled across this meeting totally by accident, looking at a Google search, and I am so glad I did. I would like to thank everyone who has spoken. It really has helped quite a bit, but it also has opened up a lot more questions for me. I am a homeowner in Baltimore City. I have been calling DPW for months, trying to get an issue resolved. And if I knew I could worry my counsel into doubt, then I would have done that too. But it leads me to believe that there may be more issues out there that are not being addressed because we're trying to do it on our own. As of this time, it might still has not been resolved. So I'm looking at all of these names. I'm certainly writing them down. I feel like I'm going to worry you all, because now I have a new avenue. But I do appreciate the fact that someone's talking about the issue. And I would like to thank Ms. Middleton for bringing up the issue of that monthly billing. It is horrendous. And I pay more monthly than I used to pay quarterly. And I definitely have been comparing my bill to some county bills. And I had talked to DPW, and they said, oh, well, the county is in their property tax. So I certainly looked up that. And even looking at one person's property tax bill, their water bill was way less. So I'm just looking to have some issues resolved, and thank you for this meeting.
Yeah, thank you for that. If you want to send us your contact information in the chat, we'll make sure it gets over to DPW to contact you.
They have my information. I call them regularly. I've documented my calling. So sending it back to them, I am a no-confidence voter on that one. But you know, if you want me to send it to city council, I'll put my information in the chat again.
Great, thank you so much.
Moving on, next is Nathaniel Kraus. Nathaniel Kraus.
No comment.
Testing, testing, testing. One, two, three, testing.
Next name is.
Testing, one, two, three.
Next.
Two, three, testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing.
Next name is Se Kwan. Se Kwan.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So, yeah, I mean, I'm actually a colleague of Elaine, who raised a question earlier. But, you know, we, basically, we, you know, we serve around, you know, 30,000 residents in the city of Baltimore and Baltimore County, having around 30 properties. One of the concerns I want to bring up is actually is, you know, the billing practices, probably, with DPW, as I am auditing a lot of, you know, your bills. One of the things I noticed is, you know, especially, or in the county, uh, Baltimore County. I'm looking at one of your bills, and he has the meter read, you know, telling you how much, you know, it was the usage, you know, it basically calculates. It calculates the difference of what your meter read was, right, from previous to current.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing we noticed was that, you know, when we actually investigated this account, um, the meter. Itself, when we took a picture, it can only read up to five digits, so after ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, it will roll over to zero. So the bill is actually showing a six-digit number, and that's just a big concern on me, like, I mean, how do you come up with six-digit when the. The actual meter can only read five digits, so I wonder if, if someone out there in your department is manually keying this stuff. Making up these numbers or something that causing all these big issues with our bill. Um, that's just a major concern because it's just, you know, that one digit makes a big difference, you know, having from six digits to five digits makes a big concern. Another, another. Uh, example that I want to share is, you know, a lot of the times, I think, uh, we will get estimated reading bills. Uh, one particular property in the city of Baltimore, uh, we were getting estimated bill from all the way from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen. These were just one flat number that, you know, if you just calculate, you can see that this was just, you know, it had the same exact cubic feet. For, for six years. And in two thousand sixteen, you guys put a new meter there, you know, because apparently to support the new billing system or whatever, the new system, but. I was expecting that all those estimated bill will reverse and charge us the actual bill because. All those estimated bills were significantly higher than we, what we currently use today with the new meter. So that's a big red flag on your billing practices, so I just want to have. I want to raise that concern, like, you know, is someone really reviewing this accounts, or are you just like, you know. We're not going to touch it until someone brings an issue. That's all my question.
I think you answered that, that was a question regarding the county billing, correct?
Uh, it's really, yeah, the, the billing practices. Around your billing department, because like I said, the, the actual meter can only read five digits, but how can we have six-digit on our bill? Does that make sense to you? Like, that's just one question, and then the second question is. When we get estimated bills for so many years, why wouldn't someone go back and reverse everything and bill us actual bills that, what we actually use? Because that never actually happened when I look at the history of this account.
So I mean, if you, if you, if you send over the information on that specific account, we could have somebody look into it.
Yeah, I, like I said, we have, we have roughly hundred fifty accounts with you, uh, and, uh, we, we do find issues pretty much on every account. But, uh, and the whole point is, we, I think we really need help from someone. In the city to really help us to answer a lot of the questions we have, because. You know, every time we call the one eight hundred number, or whatever the, whatever the hotline number is, or the email, it's just another frustration, more frustration on our end, because we just never get the answers that we need. It's just, you know, it's just ongoing issue, uh, I mean, especially with this pandemic, because I understand, you know, the, the downsizing of staffing and all that, but. We really need a solution with someone from your team and sit down with us and really go over. With our accounts and really, you know, help us understand, you know, what's going on behind your billing, because it's not transparent.
So please, please post your information in the chat, and we will have somebody contact you.
Sure, I'll, I'll put my email so someone can reach out to me, but, you know, this is kind of ongoing audit on our end too, but. Really want to just kind of share what we're finding, and it's quite shocking with the way it's been handling, because. Yeah, it's just not what I expected.
Awesome, thank you for your testimony.
Okay. Moving on. Savannah Peoples. Savannah, Savannah Peoples.
Yes, good afternoon, I'm from, um, Baltimore County, um, is there any, uh, questions specific to, um. County-related issues, please provide them in the chat, and we'll connect with the city to, um. Address them, I serve as special assistant to the county administrative officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Next name was Sharon Guila, but she, uh, she, uh, chatted that she doesn't have a microphone, so we're going to forward her information. So the next name is. Thomas Flag. Thomas Flag.
No comments.
And that leaves us to Byla Shuni Jialow.
No comment, I'm just listening.
Okay. Next name is Yaslin, Yasl, Yaslin M. Yaslin M. No response, and the final name, Mr. Chairman, is. Joanna Mercedes. Joanna Mercedes.
She's Department of Finance.
Thank you, uh, so much.
Let's get that exhausted with, Mr. Chair.
Okay, excellent, I will, uh, give Councilman Conway the opportunity to, uh, give us some last words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I want to thank the, the department, I want to thank especially, um, the IG. For, for pulling this report together and really digging into the issue, and, uh, the department for all its hard work, um, trying to address these issues. We, we realize you guys are understaffed and, and are dealing with a number of changing. Pieces to the puzzle that make this a very complicated issue, and that's, that's why I believe this is important that we held this hearing today. So it's, as we think about this going forward, of course, uh, we're, we're going to have to revisit the issue. You know, I want to make sure that we are, um, putting all the issues out on the table, um, so that we can fix those issues. But even more, I'm really interested in learning how we can prevent those, those issues from happening again in the future. And it's not just this contract, we're seeing other contracts in, uh, other parts of the city where we see, um, issues. And, um, I'm, I'm really hoping that we can learn from this, um, i- i- if at all possible, so I want to thank you, uh, Director Garbar, I want to. Thank you, um, Inspector, Inspector General, um, for, for the work that you guys are doing. For the insight that you've been able to provide today, um, and I look forward to working with you guys, uh, to help our constituents. Address these issues as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I thank you very much, uh, Councilman, and, um, we are now adjourned, and, um, we can close out the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.